Well folks, this is Deborah Burn.
Hi, nice to meet you. Nice to see you again.
As you can see, her qualifications. We've already grilled her, so I don't know. You guys, it's your chance to grill.
Can you tell us about yourself?
Other than what's written here.
Personally, sure. I moved to the Green Harbor Marshfield area about eighteen years ago from New York. Raising a family, my daughter is twelve. I have a stepdaughter who's in college. Working right now down in Quincy. Very active volunteer-wise through Forage and Norwell, which is a bar that my daughter is involved in. Horseback riding, as well as cheer coach for Marshfield seventh graders and also Green Harbor Beach Association, which my husband does with me also, which we coordinate events for Green Harbor Labor Day events and movies on each.
Alright, so we're just gonna...
So what have initially made you interested in applying for this job?
Well, I would definitely say one of the interests are, as you do my resume, I have been with a company for quite some time. The company that I am with, I do stay for a while. I'm looking for a place to call home, to settle down. And unfortunately, the company that I am with was purchased three times now. I don't know if you remember last time when I was here, but we were purchased about five years ago through Lateral Group, then through DST, and then two weeks ago we were purchased by Broadridge. So there's been a lot of turnover, a lot of uncertainty, a lot of don't know where the position's going and/or going anywhere. So seeing something within a town hall, which is a community, of course, town, this is, I hope it doesn't go anywhere, but still looking for stability. So that was one of the reasons of why I looked at the town hall as well as the position I felt as though definitely has many different duties, responsibilities, achievements, qualifications that I feel as well fit in.
Now, the only, the difference between some of the positions in the town hall in this particular one is that this board meets sometimes... This board here is very, right now, doesn't have a lot of planning issues on it. Doesn't have site, well, one site plan's not on there, but right now it just has subdivisions. But sometimes meetings here can go much longer than the average, than the, let's put it this way, the contracted timeframes for the rest of the town hall. And I'm assuming that Sabrina, obviously, because she's with the selectmen, and she's in a different position, she's not union.
Sure.
And this is a union position. Hers doesn't have a restriction on time. This particular spot wouldn't really have a restriction on time either because when we're meeting, sometimes meetings go long. Right now, they seem, you know, we probably finish around nine-thirty at night for the most part to ten o'clock. But in the early days, it used to go to eleven. So some nights can be longer, depending on what it is, the project. And then there's the, when we go on a walk, a site walk, sometimes it's on a Saturday usually or a Sunday, and then the board can meet. So some of those duties too also apply to this type of position. Looking for someone who's available to do, to be flexible. That would be, one of the concerns I would have is a flexi...
I can answer the concern that you have. Being with my background and what I've done in my career, nothing has been nine to five for me in about the thirty-five years that I've been working. Because the sales, hospitality, event planning, secretarial business, those three qualifications of what I've done, nothing has been nine to five. You have events that start at six, or you have meetings that start at six, or unfortunately, everyone's left and there's another planning committee that we all have to meet and come together, a volunteer group. So I'm used to juggling, you know, those kind of hours. That's okay, I tell you in advance, respectively, I do have something planned that day. There might be something we can work on. I mean, things in, things in life work. You know, some things are scheduled with just, you know, just life in general, and then there are pop-up stuff which we work with.
Go ahead.
I forgot my question. I forgot my question.
So keep going, we'll come back to it.
Basically, we meet every other week, which should be from, basically, as Paul said, from seven-thirty, you know, seven to nine to ten o'clock. There will be probably once, probably once a month, a Saturday meeting, which should be a site meeting, which will be at the bar, I guess, or whatever. But, you know, I assume that this is a salary position?
It is a salary, well, it's a complicated situation, I think. I think they're complicated because they made it a union position. But that's up to management to figure out how they're gonna pay for it.
One, I guess where I was actually going with it is, we meet generally, we've been meeting every week, it seems like, for a long time. But generally, we meet every other week.
Well, that's what, yeah, but because of things happening.
Right, so normally, on a normal schedule, we'd meet every other week and then we have some Saturday visits. But one of the complications about this position that made us somewhat uncomfortable with it being a union clerical position is that in some ways you have the attributes of being a department head in that we're only meeting periodically. And there's a lot of independent work. There's a lot of times when there's no one here who is your direct supervisor.
Sure.
Because the board is your direct supervisor. There may be other people who you can collaborate with or go to, but your supervisors are aboard, not any one person.
Right.
So I guess my question would be, how, how do you feel about taking on a role that's closer to a department head type role in terms of being self-sufficient, self-directed, knowing when to reach out, when to handle things on your own?
Well, I think with any position, whether, you know, whoever starts at the position, some of it is going to be trial by fire. You're going to pick up something because someone you told me, last time they were here, she was here for eighteen-plus years. There's been technology, there's been different things that you want to improve on. That's also going to come, talking to all seven of you to find out, Jim, you're looking for something with email, you're looking for something more technology-based, you were looking for something, you know, clients, make sure that if you have someone come in that's... Things are gonna happen. It's, with a board like this, you're gonna have to go through the flow of the day, write things down and call the individual person if there's something to be addressed. I mean, there's, and of course, my own personal professional skills of dealing with the situation and/or what I might have in mind, how a filing system and/or communication goes is how to follow through with it.
One of the other, one of the big things that happens here is, everything that's submitted to this board is time-sensitive. I mean, completely, you know, when a developer comes in and submits a set of plans, clock ticks. So it's a question of going up, submitting that, and having it stamped in, goes up to the clerks, and then making sure that the board...
Is aware of...
Is complying with that time stamp, or we get extensions. So Marilyn from the most part, or Marilyn from the most part is taking care of making sure that the board's aware that we have to meet or we have to get granted the extension of time. And so, and sometimes you're dealing with a conversation from the board, not necessarily alone, to our lawyer, to the town's lawyer, and dealing with issues that arise from landtime and things like that. So there's a lot, there's a lot of things that aren't necessarily in the job description that are in the job description, or in the description that frankly, I don't necessarily know this board knows of them.
Yeah. Well, you might learn them with a new person's gonna be on board because you're gonna have to ask questions.
Right, but you know what I'm saying? It's that the board is not privy to everything actually, courtesy of doing today. What the motions are, so it's not like we can actually instruct you to say, listen, take this here and take this there.
No, but I think that you've been in positions where you've dealt with public, you've had to deal with various, you know, committees or people or clients, right?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
But the companies represented had certain kind of procedures and processes in place. So give us an example of a time where maybe you had to kind of explain that or find out what those processes were. Maybe there's a new kind of event that came in that required some different things, maybe dealing with the union or dealing with, you know, some labor or something, and how you, you know, came up to speed on those rules and regs.
Well, you have to talk to the key person, first of all, that either that it presented to you. So you have to find the facts of, okay, well, when is your deadline? What are your hot points? What is the direction of where this needs to be completed? One of the things in my career of what I do, and this will be one of my secrets, is I might give you a deadline of October first, but really you have until, let's just say, October fifth to really complete it. And that just gives me the comfort zone in between because there are gonna be some tweaks and problems that are gonna be in between there. Also, looking back on history, there must be something, either a program or an email, something that's gonna give you some type of clue in regard to a situation or, you know, a change of something that you have to follow through in. Those would really be the two key things, is talking to first the individual, giving you the information, they're the ones gonna have most of it. And then really kind of going back through the email process and/or, you know, talking to someone that's gonna be somewhere. I mean, there, I feel there really is gonna be an answer at one point. Am I gonna frustrate it? I think anyone would, you know. But as long as though you have your, you know, your ducks in a row to say, okay, Deb, you have to go, you know, either, you know, go talk to Dan to make sure that the financial statement's coming in or that you've achieved your deadline. And giving myself the grace periods in between, that will help out with anyone who starts in the position.
I think so, we're kind of a large board, so there's typically somebody available somewhere.
Well, but for the most part, you know, the planning board agent works with the chair on the agenda. They'll work with the chair on what's happening for the week. And that's really the main source of communication between...
I think all of us, all of us have email and cell phones, with the exception of one person.
Yeah, I understand that, but, you know, it's the chair that kind of sets the agenda and knows what's going on. And so I just wanted to ask another, another question because you've got such a great, you know, customer service background. And that's a big part of what this job is all about. So I'm sure you've dealt with some difficulty all the time.
Oh, sorry.
So if you could give us an example of someone, and you can take a second to think about it because I don't wanna put you on the spot either, but an example of a time where you had someone come in pretty hot under the collar and you kind of had to handle that situation. Because we do have people who come in here and they don't always know what the rules and regs are. And sometimes things are perfectly right with what we're doing, but they don't agree with it. So they can get pretty irate. Sometimes I wanna take it out on you.
Oh, no. Yeah, definitely, and they probably will. Epti is the biggest thing in the beginning. I will apologize, I will listen to them. I will hear what they have to say, I will probably repeat what they have to say. An incident that I brought up with the board here, my first interview was, I think, we were sitting inside a conference room and it was actually the hotel industry. And I was supposed to bring the IT line in through one of the doctors that had a big presentation. This is in conference rooms that are five hundred-plus people. I was new. I thought I touched all bases. I touched base with all the different salespeople, convention planners. And when it came down to it, when the conference started, the IT line, the cable was supposed to come from the outside, wasn't hooked up. And that actually has to go through N-Star. So when I tell you there are some really, really mad doctors who are presenting at a conference, I was in a lot of trouble. And I stood there, and of course, you wanna cry. The best thing is though, is honestly to empathize with it, tell them that you're sorry, tell them what the reaction will be as far as concluding, or say unfortunately, I have to get back to you within an hour, but get back to them with the hour. My biggest thing is you're looking to say, I'll get back to you by two o'clock. Or I might get back to you by three o'clock because there has to be research. Sometimes answers aren't always given at that very point. But if you can at least talk and tell them, I've heard what you've said, empathize, repeat what they've said, take down your information, I think it does settle a lot of aggravation.
Your email. How did you come up with that?
Which, oh, Stormville one? Oh, it's actually a town in New York that my family's in. So, yeah, so that's where I came up.
Near, where is Stormville?
Through White Plains, up that way.
Near Carmel, New York.
Like Carmel, yeah, do you know Carmel?
Yeah, Lake Carmel, of course, yeah, my wife lives in Carmel.
Really?
Yeah, my sister-in-law, brother-in-law, he used to live in Stormville.
That's so funny. What's your wife's last name?
Her maiden name is Johnson, but her...
Well, that's a big, yeah.
Well, do you know the...
Oh, no, alright, well, that's unhealthy, what's...
Alright, so do you know the fee and agency out of Bruce County?
Oh, sure.
That's my brother-in-law.
That is a small world, see?
Yeah, it is.
That's funny.
Alright, I have another question for you. So if we were gonna contact three of your references, which three would you have us contact?
To be honest with you, I'm comfortable with all of them. I can tell you their relationships if you wanted to write some notes so you have an idea of who they are, but that's maybe... Elizabeth Fagan was the director of sales at the time at the Hilton and Dedham. From there, she's actually just progressed through the hospitality industry. I knew her from nineteen, could be like ninety-eight is where I first met her. Jackie McConkey's the finance division manager at, which was DST, which is now our new company, Broadridge. So I have communication with her in regard to clients, purchases, vendor relations. Amy Brown was our former HR director, but time after her company was purchased, the first time, unfortunately, she was let go through that process. Lynn Williams was, who is now a director at the Kate Potter Resort and Spa for the Catania. She's, she was a coworker of mine. And Mary Lou, just so you're at a level of where I am now with the company, she's one of the senior client service ladies on who does the process through, so much what I do.
Any other questions?
I think, I'm good, we've already met.
Yeah, because we've already, this is kind of for you and Paul and Tom.
Top reason why you applied?
Oh, it's funny, I was asked that earlier. And to be honest with you, because of the transition of so many changes I've had in my company, being the fact Pembroke is a hop, skip, and a jump. Qualifications, I feel as though what I can carry through and come to a town hall and bring my knowledge, I think it could be a right fit. So I just thought it was a good opportunity.
Paul, any last?
Well, I'm just gonna bring up that board there. Because some members don't necessarily particularly care whether or not we have that board or not. But I'll just tell you what it's for, for me. I'm not one that's on email and won't ever see me texted or anything like that. I have a cellphone, but the, I probably, but when I sit here, it's a visual to be able to look at something like that. And so sometimes for certain people on the board, that might be, that could be improved. I think it's an asset, so you can make, some of the older things are not. But realistically, a lot of times when we sit in here, things like that can bring up a recollection of something that hasn't been taken care of. And so that, that's kind of for me, my, not a comfort, but it's something that we can look at and reference quickly without having to take a look into a file and bring up notes about something that maybe was lost. And for me, what I would do here, whichever candidate gets it, is to move subdivisions over and put subdivisions here and put a heading over their site plan so that, so that we can tell which site plans are still current, which site plans have been completed and off the table, or coming forward. I don't think we use it...
Some of us are happy with a spreadsheet.
Well, to me, that's a spreadsheet.
But it's not up to date.
That's not up to date.
It hasn't been touched since, oh, that hasn't been touched in years.
That's my, that's my point.
But, you know, and that's okay, you're dealing with so many different people and personalities, that's fine. I mean, even if you walk into any office now, I'll be honest with you, we have white boards. Our white boards are our goals, or our white work boards are client activities. So if that's what you're comfortable with, that's okay. You know, that can still be...
Right, I just think it gives a record. Sometimes people go, you know, how many, how many blocks are in that subdivision? It's a quick reference point. So I don't necessarily know any changes that, I mean, it's one of those things that could be updated. Maybe there's new, maybe something else we could do to improve the way people are...
Well, I think, you know, if I was to take a position, this wouldn't be something that would be changed right away.
It's not a high priority.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, I'm not one that's gonna come in and first of all, change something right away. I have to get acclimated with what it is. And then from there, you know, there could still be, I mean, it's easy enough to still send out an email, but you could still update this, you know, that's fine.
Right, but this here would give you a quick synopsis of what actually is still out there. With the site number and the reference number that you go and look for in the file. It's a quick, to me, it's a quick reference. It's something that can be used or not utilized or not utilized. So it doesn't have to stay, it could be changed, altered, or whatever. I just think it's gonna take some time to get activated to...
Oh, that's what I'm...
Yeah, there's so many, especially you were saying a person was in the position for eighteen... That's a lot to unravel.
Twenty years.
It's not gonna happen overnight.
No, it's not. We don't, we don't expect it either. But we're just going to try and take this with time and patience. And we have to put up with it.
Or vice versa. I'm not, I won't be trying to say that.
No, I think we're certainly patient.
We have our moments. I was just gonna say, one of us does.
Excellent, any last questions?
No, I don't think so.
No, thank you for coming back. Oh, thanks for having me. But could you go around and just tell me what department or how you're affiliated with the town hall? I know Jim, I was with you already, and Becky, I was, and Dan. But are there like, is there like construction, electrical, are you, are you...
No, we're for Tom.
Oh, well, we're for Tom, we're only elected members of the planning board.
Jim, Jim is a civil engineer.
Yep.
In, by trade, in show life, right, I remember, yeah.
I'm a construction professional, by trade.
I'm a lawyer and a realtor, okay.
Thank you.
I'm an electrician, but I'm on two boards, I'm sitting on this board and I also sit on a DPW.
Okay.
And I'm a little publisher.
Okay.
Great.
Excellent. What is the point do we have?
I think it's your title.
I love your little tits.
You did do mortgage stuff, right?
I think you did mortgages.
Was that what he did?
Yeah.
I think so, yes.
Brian has been the keeper of the rules many times.
Brian, Brian will be the one person who can tell you most of your zoning bylaws and most of your planning board rules and regulations by heart.
Really?
If you want to.
So this is what happens when you don't come to a meeting?
That's why you gotta show up all the time.
Then I gotta show up all the time.
Defend my, my son.
Defend my reputation.
Excellent, any questions for us?
I guess what would be the next step in this, in your decision process? What do you, or when you need to fulfill?
I got one question. How would that apply?
Well, I am presently employed, so if I was to be, you know, given a position and things worked out, you would specifically have to give a two-week notice to my employer. So, and then because summertime, I'll be honest, I do have vacation planned, so there could be some overlapping with that.
I think we had talked about trying to see if we can reach consensus or agreement tonight on a candidate and then trying to, you know, move the process along fairly quickly so that we can try to have someone in place. But it depends on, after we interview everyone, if everyone's comfortable that we're running...
To talk to Sabrina, and she, she felt comfortable with town people and make Marilyn an offer to, what's the word?
Stand as a consultant?
Consult.
Consult for some period of time.
I guess they've done the same thing with Diane Tobin. And if worse comes to worse, we'll all just take a day in there. Get delayed a little bit.
And as far as a position with benefit, I've never worked for a union before. I've worked next to unions in the hospitality industry. So is there a key person that, you know, you'd be talking with, or does it...
No, it doesn't, it, you would just, you wouldn't have to worry about, you'd end up joining the union by being hired.
Oh, okay.
I think what Deborah's asking for are benefits.
Well, the benefits...
That would probably come...
Yeah, the benefits are just...
Yeah, the benefits are just...
And there's, I mean, there are people in town hall who would, you know, do the, who will do our on-board.
It's all pretty...
Great.
Well, thank you. Alright, thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Don't stay too late. We're trying not to.
To find out from, when I talk to Sabrina too, that we should probably do some reference checking because they don't do any.
There's no core check even?
They, I guess we could request.
Well, we don't...
Okay, but it's not done as a matter of rules and policies?
Actually, actually, I think that, I think the law changed on that too is that originally, when I got hired at the hospital, they core-checked you prior to being employed. I think now you get employed and then they can, then they core-check. Because there's usually a ninety-eighties...
I know, I know, but according, according to Sabrina, they don't do any.
No, they don't.
So we want, we want to check...
We don't have a, we don't have a policy with regard to background checks or core that we would be following?
Unless, I guess unless they're working with children.
We just, we just got a job in the sixth grade high school. Everybody has to be core-checked prior to...
That's, that's different.
But that's a school...
You're going into work at a, at a school, but you have employees. They're just doing a background check on everybody who's employed that's gonna be on that site. Difference about being employed though is, I think they changed that.
There's no town policy on background checks or core? I thought that was, part of the theory was that, you know, that the town has the employment policies.
I'll call them and double-check, but I was, I asked if they checked references and she was like, no.
So we're responsible for checking the references?
Yeah.
I don't put a lot of value in references because like, they're obviously... Someone down the site, but I give them a good, you know, it's like, what's the point?
This isn't down...
This is father. If I had my son pull them all, I'll pull all three up on Facebook and see what I can't... It's more valuable.
If he asks those questions, you might be able to guess what he can't do.
Folks ready for the next one?
Yep.
So once we're done with these interviews, we discuss this in open session? Are we going to...
No, we have to discuss, unless there's some particular issue about someone's background or reputation.
I think you probably need to go on a check.
No, you can't.
I can't? Paul, could you put on that?
No, because it's, it's, there's...
Didn't call me Daniel, I didn't...
If you were talking about a specific contract that you were negotiating, you could go into executive session to talk about like, you know, the specific terms of the contract that you were negotiating. But when you're hiring, apparently, you know, other than the screening interviews that could take place in executive session, did take place in executive session, the interviews in the hiring decisions are supposed to be an open session unless someone has an issue about someone's character or background or reputation that, but then you have to give someone, the person who's the subject of that discussion has to give prior to being a notice and an opportunity to attend or not and bring someone or not. So there's a whole process to that. But I haven't heard that anything has been raised regarding any of the applicants that would trigger that.
Yeah.
Excellent, Matthew, welcome back.
Thank you very much.
So as, well, as you guys can see, if you look at Matthew's resume, it's pretty extensive. A lot of planning backgrounds, an associate planner in Georgia.
And a lot of skills around software that's related to planning. As well as clerical software, like Word and Excel and PowerPoint, Outlook.
Yeah, not Outlook so much, but definitely Word, Excel, PowerPoint. I've used all those quite, I mean, very extensively. And Outlook, I've used a little bit and I could easily, I'm sure I could easily pick it up extremely quickly. It's a pretty standard email program. I mean, I'm probably one of the more sort of unusual candidates you would come across, obviously. My career path is, is, you know, not, this has been what I, you know, it's gone in different directions. But I think I've, a lot of things I've done I've benefited from in, you know, getting a PhD, you know, you know, it's sort of, it improves your skills in many different ways and you're still understanding it, you know, so, yeah.
So with the amount of administrative work done for this, this is a pretty administrative-type position. Is that gonna be exciting enough for you with a background like this? I mean, you've got extensive background in architecture, been a lecturer, spent a lot of time in academia, which is great. But you've got a lot of skill sets here that are pretty high up in comparison to what we're, you know, we're requiring for the job.
Yeah, no, it won't be a problem. I mean, you know, most, most architectural jobs are, is anybody here an architect? It's not...
A junior, I know what you wanna say.
Yeah, I mean. I love architecture, but ninety-five percent of it is drafting, which, which can be tedious in some ways, even if sort of the final result is interesting. So it won't be a problem. I mean, I'm sort of in a, maybe a somewhat unusual just position. I'm kind of simultaneously sort of overqualified and underqualified maybe for a lot of what I'm applying for because I have been away from sort of real world employment, so to speak, for a while. But essentially, you know, I've decided, you know, I've been a lecturer, which is basically to say a sort of part-time adjunct faculty member. And as you probably know, you know, adjuncts are very low-paid and it's, it's become really, unless you have connections or you're sort of a superstar, it's just virtually impossible to get a tenure check position. You know, and having done a PhD, of course, that was my ambition and then sort of having published some things, I really thought I was doing well in that regard. But it's just, it's just, it's really, it's just become so difficult. And so finally, I've sort of decided I just, you know, it's time to go back to real world employment. But having been away from it for a while and having kind of done both architecture and planning, I sort of have to start, I wouldn't say it's square one exactly, I sort of have to, you know, go back to that. So that's definitely not a problem for me. I mean, my, my job for the state of Georgia a lot more was administrative and so forth. And so I think that's sort of, you know, a step along the path. And I think as long as sort of what you're doing in the larger picture is of interest to you, you know, the issues and so forth, you know, planning appeals to me a little more than architecture because it is at a larger scale. There's a little more social issues, politics, economics involved, even if it's, even if it's a, say, a town like Pembroke as opposed to a city like Boston. There's always that larger scale that I think is really fascinating for me.
What about like grant writing? I mean, one of the things we had talked about at one point was, you know, could we ever get enough funding to have a real planner position versus a clerical position? And right now, it's seen as somewhat far-fetched from a financial standpoint. But we do need to update our master plan and we do have Old Colony Planning Council who can help us with that. But there are some things where we haven't really taken a look at some of the planning issues in town as much as we might like to. Do you see it within your bailiwick to look for grants that might help fund some additional hours for other people to either come in and help you on the planning side or on the clerical side so that, you know, maybe fund part of your position through a grant so that then we could do some of the money that's budgeted for someone else? I mean, how do you see that as a, as a possibility?
I'd be delighted to sort of write up grant proposals and funding proposals. I think I could certainly do a very good job on the writing side of those. In terms of my expertise or my knowledge in, in, is more sort of coming from academia. You know, I've obviously, I've applied for some sort of grants and fellowships and so forth as a, as a PhD student. And what you're talking about, I'm sure would be quite different. So that's not necessarily, you know, those sort of grants are not something I'm sort of highly cognizant of. It's just not something I've done before. Again, within academia, I've done it quite a bit, but not, not necessarily what you're talking about, I think. But I think, you know, as far as writing that sort of thing up, I'd be as strong, I'd be well within my skill set. I think that'd be something I'm quite good at.
Would you have an interest in going out and scouring for those kind of opportunities?
Oh, definitely, definitely. But I don't necessarily have a, a background in having done it previously, just, just so you understand that. But yeah, I mean, I think I could be a person who, who, you know, could come in and, and try to be proactive in looking for opportunities or, or, you know, getting advice from all of you and, and then being able to sort of take the initiative on my own and try to learn about things and look for opportunities and so forth. That would be something that's new to me, but I think that's not a problem.
You're doing something with heating.
As an engineer, as an engineer, there would be something.
I don't know, architects have to know HVAC systems, don't they?
I don't think that qualifies.
HVAC.
Use a bigger hammer.
So I'm talking about that, though, that would be relatively, that'd be in the lower third of the priority list, though?
Yes, it would be wonderful. But yes, it's in the, it's, we need to get our day-to-day work done first. I agree.
Right. So the day-to-day work, you know, you're prone to interruptions during the day, your phone's ringing. You never know when, you know, someone out there, a constituent of ours, if you will, will give you a call, ask you a question about what may be going on down the block. There's a, I think a very significant customer service component to what this position does because it's really the face of the planning board to the public when they first encounter the planning board. And that goes not only for, you know, the public, but also goes toward the, you know, the developers that may come in or anyone who's, you know, going to be putting a site plan together with us or a business owner. So a big component of this is really trying to provide the type of service that would lay the ground rules for them because they may come in here with not a lot of knowledge on how Pembroke works. So, you know, we're really requiring this position to become pretty quickly, you know, conversant in how Pembroke does things, what our bylaws are. So can you give me an example of another time in maybe your career where you've been put into a situation where you're kind of new, may not know all the rules. How quickly can you get up to date and what would be the approach to that?
I think, I mean, I think to some extent, every new job I've had has had some of those. Especially as an adjunct, you're often sort of thrown in and just told, here's the course title, go ahead and write up your syllabus and figure out what it's going to pay. So I think that's something I'm comfortable with. In terms of my, sort of what my approach should be or my strategy, you know, I think it's important to listen and learn from other people. It's possible to talk to the, sort of person who's done the job previously, to talk to other employees within the town of Pembroke to be able to look at the, the relevant documents, planning, designing documents, the regulations, maps and so forth. But also, I just sort of not to be afraid to be proactive and, and sort of jump right in, I guess. I think communication, I mean, generally, your, your biggest assets, if you're gonna be your coworkers, it's communications crucial. And then with, with the general public also. Just, just sort of being, being able to sort of communicate reliably as well. So people know that even if you don't have the answer, you'll call them back and tell them how you're progressing or where you stand. So people feel that they rely on you as a consistent person. And they don't get frustrated with, with sort of a person who kind of drops out of contact or they don't know where they stand and that sort of thing. So I think, you know, having taught, well, I think I mentioned this last time, I think we were just, sort of having taught for the past about two years now, primarily undergrads, so graduate students also. I think my, sort of my communication skills and my sort of interpersonal skills have definitely strengthened in that regard. So yeah, I think, you know, I mean, I think the, certainly the paperwork is crucial to sort of do those things reliably. But the communication, at the end of the day, is what I would imagine is the most important. And I'm sure both sort of by phone and by email, sort of both critical, critical to sort of communicate carefully and then be aware that everything you say, you know, sort of for better or for worse, everything you say is sort of on the record. And you're sort of responsible for those things.
Have you had another time where you've had to learn bylaws or regulations?
I haven't because my, my previous job in planning was for the state of Georgia. So that was more, we were more, we would basically review, well, we had a number of things we did, but we would, one of the crucial things, we would review all the comprehensive plans that were submitted by local governments throughout the state. This was when I was in Atlanta. And also, we'd sort of promote quality growth and good practices. We would travel around the state, sort of having charats and other things, talking about different problems, you know, in different parts of Georgia. So it's something I'm definitely familiar with, but I haven't previously worked in a local government or in, or in a planning capacity at the local level.
What was the criteria for reviewing the comprehensive plans? Was it just sort of friendly advice? Or did you have a statutory role in the review?
It was statutory. In practice, generally, we were, we were kind of expected not to really raise a fuss unless there's a serious problem with a plan. You know, we definitely got some plans that we thought could have been better, had certain issues, but, you know, we generally maybe just approved them anyway. But if there were certain problems, especially with the, the current land use map and the future land use map that they are required to submit. And so those, if there were problems with those, if there are inconsistencies or things that could be legal issues, we would have to, to say, okay, this is an issue. And then there are just sort of certain sections of the plans that had to be submitted. There are also things called service delivery strategies, which were for infrastructure, which in Georgia, there's a lot of, obviously, it's very different from here. So there's lots of issues with annexations, municipalities annexing and extending out into unincorporated parts of the county. And so often, the different governments are, are competing with their water and sewer lines, actually. Sometimes it'll be a city versus county or a city versus other city. And so they'd have to submit these, these documents, which we would check to make sure nobody was overlapping, you know, no sort of wasteful duplication of services and so. Primarily, it was water and sewer. There could be other issues as well. And so those sorts of things, again, sort of a statutory role where we would, you know, just have to, at the basic level, just have to make sure there weren't conflicts and overlaps and so.
So.
Okay.
No, yeah, finish, finish.
I was gonna say, so, I mean, one of the big things we have to do is keep track of timelines. So how would you go about, you know, we have five site plans. If we don't respond to them within a certain amount of time, they become automatically accepted. We have subdivision plans that expire after a certain period of time, although there's a question as to whether it's our obligation or the developer's obligation to watch the clock on those. What would, what would sort of be your strategy for learning and watching those sort of things to help the board make sure we don't mess up on those kind of things?
I think I'm a pretty well-organized person. I can honestly say that. And so I think, you know, have everything laid out, either with Excel, spreadsheets or other sort of graphical things. And just sort of keep everybody in constant communication, probably through sort of CCD mails, I'd imagine, just to make sure we're all on the same page and, and I'm sort of saying clearly, this is where we stand right now. Here's what's coming up imminently. Here's what's further on the horizon. And to really sort of be on top of those things on a day-to-day level and not to let things sort of just kind of slip out of sight or get lost in the shuffle to make sure everything is, is organized in a very clear way. And yeah, really just to, to stay on top of things and not, maybe not, not to let one project sort of become so stressful or sort of take up so much of my time that I'm losing track of other things, like not to panic about one thing and say, oh, you know, the next three days, we're only gonna do this. And then that's when other things start to sort of maybe slip away. So to be, I think, efficient at multitasking and really sort of make sure, make sure that you're on top of all of it.
So kind of like where you go with this as far as the, you know, not panicking over things, so.
Or hopefully not.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
I can't promise.
People are usually, you know, we like to talk a lot about competencies, behaviors and, you know, the big buzzword now is emotional intelligence. You know, kind of understanding that there are times when you need to kind of keep calm in the face of adversity, if you will. So is there an example you didn't bring us from maybe your career where, you know, there was some stress happening in a project, maybe a timeline that was pretty tight or a couple of people actually for your time all at the same time or things all kind of falling into place, you know, in kind of a short timeline where you, what, what kind of, how did you kind of handle that? Or what kind of ways did you use to, or, let's see, skills did you use or behaviors did you use to kind of manage that?
I think maybe being a PhD student was maybe the, sort of the best example of that, even though it's not a real world job, so to speak. Just because you've got, on the one hand, you're expected to make progress on your dissertation and then you have to sort of keep up with your classes. You're, you're a teaching assistant. And then later on, I actually taught a class too. And so you're sort of, you're kind of wearing a lot of different hats and you really have to make sure all those things are, you know, it's up to you at the end of the day. You have to just make sure you're being responsible to all those different people, whether it's your students, whether it's the faculty, people, the class you're taking or the dissertation that you're working on. And it's sort of, the onus is on you to make sure you're, or the onus was on me to make sure I was keeping track of all those obligations I had. And I think just, I think just, you know, sometimes just really take it one step at a time. And once, you know, if you're, if you're carefully well-organized, then at least you know, then at least you sort of can keep track of everything. You know where you stand. And if you do fall behind, at least you know exactly where you stand on everything. And at least you can kind of prioritize and say, this is crucial, you know, this can wait till tomorrow. This is, this is a deadline in two hours. And once you, I feel like once you're well-organized, then at least you can, then at least you can take it one thing at a time without stressing about those other things.
So what about strategies to organization and prioritization? Any kind of strategies that you use to kind of get yourself in a position where you feel very confident about, you know, the timelines and everything else?
I think just sort of, just based on what your coworkers tell you or what, what deadlines you know are coming up, what you've learned from experience, to sort of prioritize one point and other things. And to, again, to make sure that you're, you know, that you're well-organized enough that you don't spend an entire, maybe eight hours down one thing and lose track of those other things where maybe just that ten minutes, just putting that ten minutes into something sort of keeps you on track, that one phone call or something. But if you're so, you know, if you don't see that thing. So for me, just, just trying to stay calm and definitely keep in track of what the deadlines are. And also kind of, sort of what you said, emotional intelligence, paying attention to people, whether it's all of you, of course, or, or my coworkers or a developer or whatever, and understanding what, what things are crucial to people and what things are, are important but less, you know, less imminent or less essential.
It's not an easy job because you've got to manage the expectations of the board, you've got to manage the expectations of the town hall, and you've got to manage the expectations of the public. So the next question I was gonna ask you was on prioritization. I, it may not be a fair question, so don't put too much pressure. But you know what? If someone else's priorities aren't the same as yours, but you really know what the priority is, right? I mean, you've got a timeline, you've got a project that needs to be completed at time or at least the process needs to continue. And someone else can come in and completely throw you a curveball on that. But their priorities, of course, should be way above where they, you know, where the reality is with a priority. So handling that, so that could be something like a, you know, you know, a citizen coming in and saying, they're doing something down the block, you've got to do something about it, that kind of thing.
Well, I, I guess I should back up. I've been in, even though I work for the state of Georgia, I've been in enough sort of local government sort of zoning meetings and that kind of thing to know how contentious that can be. And so I think it is, it is important sometimes to kind of let a lot of that stress or the stress other people are feeling or the intensity of their emotions or the intensity of their criticism, to sort of, to kind of take it with a grain, to just sort of take it with a grain of salt and let it, you know, be the sort of be the adult in the room in a sense and kind of let it, you know, don't take it personally, just kind of let it go and, you know, take it in a mature way. I think in terms of your question, my, you know, my ultimate responsibility would be to, to all of you, the board, and then also to the town, is the town manager, is that the right title?
The district.
The town administrator.
Which is a big difference in that stress.
You have no mayor, right?
We have no mayor. We have the board of selectmen who manages the town administrator.
It's the ultimate.
But the planning board.
The ultimate board.
We're an autonomous board.
But we're an autonomous board.
Yeah. So my primary sort of loyalty or obligation, so to speak, would be to the priorities that, that, that all of you give me, or at least I would imagine. And then also, I assume to the town administrator too.
Well, no, no, no.
No, just. Okay.
Well.
There wouldn't be many cases where that would happen.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're professionals and we work with other boards professionally. So to the extent the board of selectmen who are the governing executive function in town have a question of us or have, we need to collaborate with them, it's important to be professional and respectful with that department. But in terms of the actual priority and supervision.
And the work, yeah, the work.
It's.
But it normally goes to the board.
Yeah.
And they're definitely, I mean, I think they're definitely, I mean, again, back to you, what you were telling, there would definitely be times where I have to sort of maybe politely but firmly say to that member of the public or that a butterer, that stakeholder, that developer, whatever, I hear what you're saying, but that's gonna come up next Wednesday or that's, you know, I'll, I can get back to you by next Friday on that, but I can't do that now. Or maybe, you know, in, in some way or other, again, to sort of try to be the adult in the room, so to speak, but not to be sort of, not to let somebody else's emergency become my emergency unless it's. unless it's clearly something that all of you would regard in that fashion.
Just one question. Why Pembroke? What made you decide you wanted to join up, join up with the town?
Well, again, sort of having decided to leave academia, I do want to stay. My, so I'm originally from, I grew up in Newton, you know, a suburb, obviously much larger and closer to Boston, but somewhat similar maybe. And, you know, I have, my father and stepmother are still in the Boston area. My mother is in New York, so not too far. And I decided that, you know, it made sense to, I mean, my parents are getting older and it just seemed like it made sense to be back here in this, in Massachusetts permanently. And so at that point, just looking for jobs in urban planning, really all sort of throughout eastern Massachusetts, Boston, suburban areas and so forth, even a few in Rhode Island. And so Pembroke was one of the worst areas. So I, you know, I, you know, before I applied here, I'd never been to Pembroke before. I was sort of, I had heard of Pembroke, but I certainly can't claim I had any special knowledge or interest in Pembroke before. But I think every, I mean, definitely, you know, when I was working in Georgia, you know, every town, you know, whether it was, you know, Atlanta or a small town in the countryside or something in between, there was always some interesting issue or some interesting problem happening. And sometimes being in a, in a small or medium-sized town is even more interesting because you can sort of understand the whole thing.
Hi, yes, what's your sort of timeline more or less?
I think we're hoping to make a decision tonight or next week and let everybody know where we're at.
And your availability if it comes to that?
I guess immediately. Definitely let me know. But yeah, I'm pretty much available. Yeah, whatever you prefer.
Okay.
Obviously, I'm living in Boston now, so there might be certain amount of committee for the first few weeks or something like that. But yeah, I'm pretty much available.
Okay.
And just obviously just to stay in touch, so I have an idea of what situations you're in.
Okay, great.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Rachel's here. Come on up, Rachel. So we're already up with these people, so we're, this is the Andy Hall and Tom Show.
Well, I mind a blog with Rachel, Rachel's on the, uh, so I'm familiar with Rachel.
So it's the Andy and Tom Show then?
Well, no, I still want to make sure that she, I still want to put some clarification on some of the things that we do or require for this board. As far as, you know, like, there's discussions about, like, Monday nights that we meet, and that the hours are not necessarily set like the rest of the town. It's sort of like a CPC meeting where it can go longer than, than a defined end. And then the question is, is that normally we meet every other, but for a lot of times we meet every Monday night because of just the workload and the time-sensitive requirements by the state to meet and to, to take action and sort of things where it's public games, or whether it's a, um, writing, writing, um, the approvals and the restrictions we have on a site plan or on a subdivision. Then there's also, we do site walks that can occur on a, and basically, a lot of times it's up to the board when they can meet, whether it's a Saturday or Sunday morning, something that works out for you, for the person's position, like for the board in general works to work our paths for that site walk, and the developer. Then there's also, and I just brought up about town meeting. A lot of times we have articles on town meeting, and we kind of want to make sure that we have everything there to present to the town. And that's kind of, kind of what we've done in the past. The only thing that's different about this versus McMurray is that this division is going to be a union division. And that's, it's sort of, um, the preference of the selectmen. Not necessarily the preference of the board, but we're working. And not to say that we're against that, but I'm just saying is that it just opens up a fine line as to how many hours and compensation and things like that. And that'll be worked out over the course of time, I think, that I will adjust to that. But otherwise, I'm already familiar with you, so I'll hope to look up to you.
Tom, no, I'm just, you know, is this, right now, you work part of CPC?
Yes.
Do you have time to point it out?
Um, I'm actually hired as an independent contractor.
Okay. This will give you a video.
Yes.
Why are you changing, changing seats?
Sorry.
Why are you going from CPC to planning board? Is the CPC a full-time job?
No, it's, it's very part-time.
Okay.
She doesn't have to actually probably give that up.
No, she won't, yeah.
Not necessarily, I don't think, but that's a, that's a, a complex.
So we don't, we can, we can talk about that one.
We don't know what the rules are.
Yeah, we don't know the rules about conflicts and whether or not you-
Well, see, that may be one of the things you have to talk about in the executive session.
No, that's, no, I, I mean, I think that'll be up to her, but it'll, it'll, there'll be an answer.
Yeah, right.
And I, I thought that there's a whole issue about whether you're a special municipal employee versus a municipal employee, whether you can have multiple jobs within the municipality.
Well, that's, that's another issue.
I'm sure that, you know, that Jim Vekian did explain his position, what you have to do, which probably is quite similar to what you do for CPC.
Some of it is, yes.
I think the only other thing that is going to be different is going to be the, uh, actually clocking in of the stuff that comes in and making sure that it's targeted, I guess, everything is kind of sensitive. I mean, I'm sure your position was, I think it's such a position with my side, that's all, that's the basic thing we use. I don't have any other questions.
Well, what would your strategy be for maintaining a sort of view of all of the projects that are pending? All of the site plans, all of the subdivision plans, and all the deadlines that we have to follow here in town?
I'm glad you asked that question, because that was something that I was responsible for when I worked over at Massasoit as the assistant to the executive director of communications there. And actually, I had an Excel, because she was, um, she, that was her main reason for trying to find somebody, to hire somebody. She had never had an assistant before, and she wanted somebody to kind of keep her on track. She was having difficulty doing that, meeting deadlines and things like that. So actually, I used a simple Excel file where we had a lot of things due at the same time every year, over and over again. For instance, our college view book and things like that. So I really just had a simple Excel spreadsheet that would remind me, and it would, I had a tie-in to my Outlook account that would send me reminders and, and things like that, so that I was always on top of what was coming up next.
Good. Sounds like a strategy. So you've got some great experience in customer service, based on what you've done in the past?
Absolutely, yes.
Legislative aide requires a lot of interaction with the public. So from your experience, and I'm sure you've seen, you've seen the gamut from people very happy to people very upset.
Absolutely.
So give us an example of a time when someone may have been pretty upset and how you kind of steered the conversation back to kind of calmness or got them into that they were, may not have been happy with, but were satisfied enough with it?
Sure, actually, it is, it is, I think back to when I was a legislative aide. During the time that I was at the State House as a legislative aide, we had a lot of phone calls from constituents who were having difficulties finding employment and were therefore signing up for financial assistance through the state. And they were very upset naturally, because some of them were in jeopardy of losing their homes. So they would call us looking for assistance and answers, and they were very upset. And the way that I, it's difficult sometimes to explain and put into words, but the way that I would deal with them and their situation was, I always tried to be, um, well, also obviously compassionate, but I tried to relate to them and tried to understand what they were going through to try to help get them in a situation where they could, in a mind frame, sorry, where they could try to deal with things, you know, think through things rather than use emotion. And I just, in my own life experience, I think I've related to so many different experiences like that and, and people and their life experiences, that it makes it easy for me to talk to just about anyone. And so I don't find that difficult. When people come at me with emotion, I'm able to take a step back, take a deep breath, and kind of look at all the options and solutions.
So when you were thinking about this position, what kind of research did you do to find out more about it?
I, I mainly just read the job description, and I went to your webpage. I looked at what you have there for your documentation of meetings and things like that. And then I went, well, I went online to actually get just a basic definition and explanation of what a planning board is and the different things that it's responsible for.
Tell us what a planning board is.
Tom still has, though.
I'm on my Tuesday.
Tom still has no, what our duties are, what our obligations are.
Oh, me too.
That's good, that's good. Did you find out anything that you weren't expecting?
Not really, except I do have a question. I heard you earlier mention about the legality of the board. There was something in the description that I read online that there was, that you pretty much take votes and that sets the policy and sort of sets up, um, what, you know, what goes before the town, like that. But then there was another aspect of it. They said that the planning board has two functions, and it's not really just legislative in nature, is that?
So, so we do, I'd say we have two main functions in this town, and it can vary from town to town. We, we work on bylaw changes and bylaw review, so that's more of the kind of, and that has to go before town meeting. So if we want to change a bylaw, we would prepare it, it'd be some coordination with town council, and there would be a presentation of some kind at town meeting to get a vote, because it can only be changed at town meeting.
And zone, and zone control.
Yeah. So, so whether that's a zoning-
Takes you right to zoning bylaws.
Yeah, we write the zoning bylaws, that's what I meant, really. But the other piece of it is, most of what we do week to week is really reviewing site plans and issuing special permits in certain parts of town, issuing site plan reviews in other site parts of town, doing sub, reviewing subdivision plans. And hopefully, trying to engage in some amount of planning, reviewing the maps and keeping those up to date. And at some point, we need to update our, our master plan. Whether we do that through Old Colony Planning Council, whether we find a grant to hire someone to come in and help us do that. You know, that's also within our daily wick, is to help to create a master plan and go through the master planning process, which involves other people as well.
Well, we had a, the last time we did it, we had a committee that was appointed by this board to take up, basically, we took the money, put out flyers and looked at, asked the public what they thought the town needed, and then used, they compiled all that, brought it to this board, where we, we looked at it and made decisions based on the-
Yeah, there were several bylaws changes made.
So face your question, we're also regulatory, in that we set the standards, construction standards for new roadways, like how wide they have to be, how much pavement, what areas have to go, stuff like that. So that's the regulatory part.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, and even in, in sort of a regulatory, traditional part in terms of our review?
Yep.
So there's a lot we do that we don't even-
No, we just do it.
Oh, the other piece that I think we talked about when you came before the subcommittee were grants and, and sort of looking for grants to fund things like a master plan or to help fund maybe a part-time planner position or to, you know, do some of the other work that we're looking at in terms of, of grant-based work that might help some of what we do. And your experience in looking for grants and finding grants and helping to write grant applications?
It could, it could be funding, things like that, if the board comes up with, we want to put on a town meeting, for a town meeting vote to come up with $50,000 for a new, and then it's a question of getting that up to the selectmen, just like any other article that's put on town meeting.
But I'm also talking about grants, where we go out and look for grants.
No, I, I understand that, but I'm, but I'm talking about things we've actually done here.
Right, well, I'm asking-
These are going to be new things that-
Yes, I'm asking whether or not we, I'm asking what, in terms of capabilities, of going out and looking for grants to, to maybe improve some of what we do here.
I do have some experience with that, which I, I acquired while working as a legislative aide as well at the State House. I did only work there for a year, so it's just a year of that experience, but I do have-
I think you had talked about actually going out and looking for grants for the towns that were within your district?
Yes.
Maybe you want to elaborate on that a little bit more?
Well, the one, the one that comes to mind right away, probably because it was the most fun to find, was when, actually, a constituent here in Pembroke called us looking for funding for a skateboard park.
Oh, I remember that.
And we actually found one right through Tony Hawk, I mean, it doesn't get any better than that. And we got the grant for him, so it was exciting. But there are, there are so many other avenues that we could explore for grants for the town, so.
Absolutely.
Any questions, more questions for us?
Okay, Rachel, I'm going to bring this up too, because I brought it up to one of the other applicants. I didn't get a lot into it. We have some free time. You love the chalkboard.
Oh, I already heard about the chalkboard.
No, this is a different perspective on the chalkboard.
I don't particularly want it wiped out.
Okay.
All right. Some people want it wiped out.
Okay.
No, I look at it as a tool-
Yeah, you just heard what that hasn't changed. It's a older version of a spreadsheet.
Right, it is an older version of a spreadsheet, but it's one that when we're in meetings sometimes, it, it, you know, you, sometimes when you're in a meeting, you're not really looking at a couple of things, but things come up, and we're talking about this board. And I, yes, it can be utilized better than it is.
Sure.
And whether it's modified in the future or removed or whatever, but I do think that a few people sometimes-
Sure get off break heat.
Yeah, I don't think so. But realistically, sitting on this side of that, I use that quite a bit to, to look at things that actually haven't been completed, haven't been off that board, that exist. And sometimes when we're looking quickly about somebody coming in, wanting an extension of time, there's a perfect example of things that constantly are in here for extensions of time, that you not have to go to a computer or a spreadsheet, or maybe you haven't, you didn't have the time to slip that out and sit like that.
Yeah, well, I, I heard about the strategy of using Excel to kind of manage and prioritize.
Well, that's true.
Sounds really good to me.
Could you translate your Excel spreadsheet onto a board like this?
She just teed it.
I'm just saying that, I'm just saying is that for, for, for a site, sometimes what happens in, that's what we always use. I'm not saying it has to go away. I'm not saying it can't go away. All I'm saying is, is it's a tool that has been used in the past and has been used pretty effectively for people who come in and they haven't finished something, and, and-
So that leads me to a good question, because Paul obviously has need for that and the rest of us don't. So you've got a board-
What about when there's conflict among board members?
His weekly email, have a spreadsheet emailed to us, shall I guess, when we-
Yeah, but I don't do email.
Oh, you sure?
Yeah, okay, so that's a good, that's, that leads to my question. So we've got a board of seven members, some are, you know, want more technology presented to them. Not really technology, but they want an easier way to kind of access information. Others want access to the information in different ways. So how do you, how do you kind of manage that and strategize around that?
Well, I've actually had to deal with that with the CPC.
Because you have two of the six members.
They prefer to have things like minutes, notifications and things like that mailed to their home, you know, at the post office, and there are others who prefer an email. And I, I'm happy to do whatever the board prefers. Whatever makes everyone happy, I will do it. So I go to the post office and I send an email to the CPC. So that's what I would do here as well.
So speaking of keeping everyone happy, what do you do when you have multiple things on your plate and someone comes in with a major complaint? How do you handle your day? How do you handle that interaction?
You mean someone, it could be-
From the public says, you know, um, I just got this notice in the mail, and there's a public hearing, and I want to know more about this because it's right down the street from my house, and I think it's going to be a huge problem. And they, you know, and that becomes-
Show up at the public hearing.
Well, no, okay, I'm not asking how you would handle it, I know how you would handle it.
That's why it doesn't deal with the public.
You're not allowed to deal with the public. How would you handle it?
Well, I think at the beginning, in the beginning, I'm sure there would be a learning curve to know what, you know, exactly, which would be the priority. I think after some time, once I learn that, you know, if, if the constituent is that, is my priority at that moment in time, that's what would have to take precedence at that moment in time. But I think it would, you know, take me, I would, I can't put a timeline on it, but it would take me, you know, a reasonable amount of time to know what the board sees as priorities for me.
Well, I mean, what if the priority was that you had to get a notice out to the newspapers and to all the abutters for a public meeting that we had scheduled, and someone comes in with a constituent complaint, and we're on a legal clock on the notices to the abutters about the public hearing?
I think naturally, off the top of my head here, I think off the top of my head, I would say, naturally, I would try to get that, the legal notice completed immediately and then try to deal with the constituent. I mean, if I, if we were going to miss a deadline, naturally, I wouldn't want to have that happen. And I would try to explain to the constituent, this is the situation. I would, of course, invite them to stay or here.
That's actually very easy, just put a sign on the door that says, gone to the bathroom, go to the bathroom. Email the newspaper from your smartphone to say, put in the following notice.
Well, no, but I do think that there's a piece of the job that's not easy, and that is that sometimes you can't allow yourself to be kind of whip-sod with your priorities because there are things that come at you.
Okay.
And there are other people's priorities as opposed to the priorities of the office. And that sometimes when you're in that constituent role, I do think that's a difficult thing because we are, you know, we do serve the public, and the developers are part of the public that needs to utilize our services. At the same time, we have things that are on the agenda already that are ahead of this person who just came in the door. And so it's, you know, you don't want to lose track of servicing the person whose notice needs to go out, or else it messes up their schedule. At the same time, you have someone come in the office, and keeping that from overtaking your day sometimes can be a challenge. So being able to kind of allow someone to be heard, but not allow them to take over your day can be difficult.
Sure.
I would say in this chair.
As I said, too, sometimes we get, there's a lot of stuff that really isn't in our daily wick, if you will, that gets presented to us to go on the agenda, you know, disputes between neighbors, you know, amisements that were between a developer and a butter, you know, that they'll, they'll try to kind of come back here and look for some kind of resolution, and we're really not. I think that's more next door than- A lot of times it's a legal issue.
Yeah, sometimes it's just a civil legal issue.
Right.
It's not a town issue.
Sometimes it's, sometimes it may be just a question of saying, I'll, I'll present your complaint to the board, and I'll get back to you. Some of it can be that simple, that first off, I, in your position, can't make decisions for the board, and that, and that the board meets on a certain day, and sometimes, and I'll put your, your question to the board to, to, during discussion. That's the calmest way to take, I think, the deal with the public.
If we're in a ten-minute period, you could-
Defuse the issue.
Defuse the issue and get back to the chair. I, I think, you know, being polite and professional and courteous is the key.
Right, and letting them understand that there's nothing that in this session that we're having right now that could be solved without the board solving, or at least it should check in their opinion to them. Or whether it goes to legal issue, because sometimes, a lot of times, we have to seek counsel. I mean, some of the questions that come aren't necessarily something that this board actually can handle. And we need guidance too.
And, and sometimes it's a question of, it's going to take you time to research through the files to find the plan. That's all we have to look at, and they're trying-
You discovered them, not all yet.
And, and so sometimes finding the plan can be, can take time. And so sometimes it is a question of, you know, this is a realtor who wants to see the plan, but at the same time, you have a, you know, there's, it's, it's not always the easiest position in that sense. And sometimes it's to be firm and say, I'm sorry, but I don't have time to research that today. I'll need to get back to you by X amount of time, depending on how long and what else you have on your plate.
I think it's all doable, in the course of the day, sometimes, depending on what the day is.
And depending on where that plan is.
Correct. It could be here, it could be over there, it could be in the trash. Hopefully not. But then again, there's all, you know, and sometimes is that we also, this board deals with the engineering frame that we have on, that we use through subdivisions for reviews and site plans. So that's another avenue of the ability sometimes to get information.
Speaking of that, we're way over on our dealing, I mean, bidding out our peer of people.
But that's one of those other, other things that can be looked at for information that we may not find here. They, they have it, should have it on their computer system. But I'm good.
Me too. All right. Thank you very much. Any, any last questions?
Availability. We've been asking everyone what your availability would be if you were offered the job at the Saturday.
Take a break?
Yeah. I can't believe you guys have a problem with that board.
Thanks again. Nice to see you again. Thank you. Thank you, you too. Thank you very much.
So we'll, you want to take a five-minute reset?
Yep, a little bathroom break?
Thank you.
Pause this. Be this age.
And you too, yeah, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for coming in. All right, you too. Do you want me to pause that?
Yes, it might be one of the, might be one of the, what's that?
Pause the-
No, you should, you could, yeah.
I don't know if you want to record our break.
Do you keep the break on record?
It's supposed to still be recorded, all right.
We have exactly five. You missed your, uh, your employer was in the other night.
employer?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Is there someone in room eight, still?
Oh, I don't know. I didn't see him.
Some people walk by.
There's a side life upstairs.
There's lights upstairs.
Who's meeting?
Conservation, maybe?
DPW?
No, DPW.
Oh, that ghost guy's the whole room.
There's one of those. We met over there in the south.
ZB A?
ZB A, yeah. Oh, conservation. Is that a conservation now?
No, 'cause Art would be in conservation. And Art's been here.
It might be quite-
Oh, another question.
Okay, so we're back, it's, uh, eight thirty-five, we're back from our break. All right, folks, so, how do you wanna do this?
Well, should we shake them in order?
Me, Dan, and Becky already kind of talked about it. At our executive session, which we're along to go.
We were in the subcommittee, so we had to decide who to bring up to you guys.
So just, you know, kind of, I guess I'd like to hear from Andy, Paul, and Tom, what you guys think.
Well, personally, I like the idea of having a local person at the position. And that would be, uh, Ms. Michael. She seems quite qualified. Mr. Heinz. I think he's mostly all qualified. And as far as Mrs. Burns, I think she's probably as qualified as, uh, as Rachel. So, I don't know.
Well, all three candidates bring some great things to the table.
Oh, they do.
You know, I think Rachel's got some local experience, which is great, although I was, we, I, you know, I wanted to ask the question of Matthew, whether he, this would be, you know, kind of a core type of job for him. But, you know, he answered the questions pretty well. Um, he understood the fact that, you know, the priorities come from the board. He got that pretty quickly. He seems to understand, you know, how to kind of juggle some of the things that, um, are nice to do versus the things that we have to do. You know, the idea of doing some planning, which may be something that's, you know, in a strong set of skills, I think he realizes that that's not gonna be the top priority of what he does every day. He's gonna have to deal with public, he's gonna have to deal with the board, work with the board. So I like that in his answers. I, you know, I like what Rachel brings to the table as far as organization and the strategy to kind of organize the work. I think both of those candidates got a pretty good handle on what the scope of work is. I didn't get as much of that from our first candidate tonight. Her background's pretty different, not that those skills couldn't come along. Sometimes it's advantageous to come from something completely different to something new, but you bring great skills with you. You know, I think she's had some experience dealing with people and customers. However, I think the answers that the other two candidates- So I think it's, you know, to me, there's a lot that, uh, you know, Matthew can bring to the table in addition to, you know, the basics of the job, uh, which is appealing. On the other hand, I think Rachel's got great experience. I mean, being a legislative aide means constituent services and understanding how to prioritize some of those things. She gave some pretty good answers on the grant process, too, which is something that we're interested in. So, um, I think they're two strong candidates.
Well, I'll let you go.
All right, so, um, I thought the, I thought all the candidates were, um, were very good. Reading, um, the-
Resumes?
Resumes. I would be concerned if, uh, if Matthew was hired, I'll be honest with you, because, um, I think the problem, I think one of the problems the board has is that you need to have somebody who's gonna be here in, in the situation for a long time. I think the problem is, is that, uh, because of his education and because of his qualifications to many different things, not necessarily this, uh, I don't think this is gonna be enough for him. For, and when you start having to take in, factoring him moving closer and then, uh, and he's not, he's not from this area and, and I'm not sure the money is gonna be enough to take in support, uh, that, that commitment. I, I, I do agree, uh, and I've dealt with it, and I'm, I'm being openly open is that Rachel works up at the CPC and does a very good job, and she is local. And I know that, um, looking for myself, I'm looking for somebody who's gonna be committed to the town of Pembroke for a long period of time. And I don't wanna have somebody come in and then us have, this board have to go through something in a short period of time to take and we go through this, uh, requirement of applying for-
I do see, I see your point, but I think you gotta look at any candidate that we hire, kind of even a-
No, I understand, I understand that, but most people are more inclined if they actually live here and have a family here, they're gonna, they're very self-roots there. You know, and to me, it's an enhancement to have somebody that lives in the town of Pembroke already. But that's, that's just, that's just my, my opinion.
I, I, I'm sorry, thank you, I, I concur with Paul. I, I felt that, one, that Matthew, while he's very qualified, this position does not require a PhD, which he is. And also, uh, looking at his experience, moving through the years, he doesn't stay in many places very long. And I, it just concerned me that he had a PhD, he's, he's an educator. And I was just sort of surprised that he, he had some experience in planning, which was good.
Well, I think if you look at Rachel, so you'll see that she hasn't stayed anywhere very long either.
No.
And I guess my concern is that we're making a lot of assumptions.
I think the other night, Matthew would answer that question, 'cause that was my concern with him. I said, you know, "It looks like there's some gaps and stuff in your work." And it was actually, he was either doing his PhD or he was teaching. And that's why it didn't all flow.
He had said that, he had said that, too.
Well, also, I think that part of the problem, part of the reason why he's looking to settle down is because the way universities these days treat lecturers and adjunct professors is really quite horrible. What they do is that they, they sign you to a contract for a semester at a time and you have no job security.
That's, that's what happened with him, I understand that.
And so I felt like he was very clear that he's looking to settle down and make the move, which is a big commitment to make a move like that. And I felt that that showed a lot of commitment to this position, that he wasn't gonna sort of commute here for as long as he had the job and then find a job somewhere else, right? That he was actually looking to relocate down here. I guess there's a part of me that's, that can, that hears what you're saying about the, the qualifications go far beyond what we asked for, for the job, but I think he also could bring a lot to the job that no one else really can because of those qualifications. I feel like he has the ability to help us upgrade our technology in terms of how we manage site plans, how we manage, you know, the keeping of records. A lot of this, I think, he has the ability to upgrade at the same time that he could-
So elaborate a little bit on that for us, 'cause not having the benefit of the other meeting, we didn't get too deeply into that question with him, so.
Sure. He's, since his resume, like the software that Merrill uses to produce these maps, he knows it. He can do the same thing with these maps that I can do, bring in GIS maps from the state that are already there. Stuff like that, like those maps I printed out to you the other night.
Yeah.
You'd be able to, you know, throw them up on the screen here or something like that. And that's, and that, he was the only one of the three that brought that kind of understanding of the technology available.
We understand that, that he is the only one of the three candidates that had, has any planning experience, which obviously the G I S is part of that job.
Right.
Well, he also has the architectural experience, so in terms of reviewing site plans and understanding site plans.
That, that, see, he can look at a plan and know what he's looking at.
Architects don't look at site plans, architects don't do it.
Sometimes they do.
They sometimes look at-
I know.
You may think they're not very good at it.
I know they're not very good at it.
But, um, but he has the combination of the-
No, no.
Planning and architect, which is unusual.
Just because he can build a farm, Tom, doesn't mean it's not a pretty plan.
And I also thought that he made a good point about the fact that when you're doing something like architecture, ninety-five percent of it is very detailed, uh, laborious, tedious work.
They get into a lot of stuff like how many tiles on the ceiling and how many square foot of paint and how many, how much wood you have to put into the building.
Doing letters and doing newspaper notices is like high-level work. High-level things.
I think his, you know, his teaching and his stuff that he's done, you know, assistance gives him that clerical piece, you know.
Yeah, but I just, I just feel that he's mostly overqualified, don't get it.
So what's the problem with someone being overqualified?
I don't think he's gonna stay.
I agree.
Right, so, so the issue with being overqualified is that we don't think he's gonna stay, but there's no-
I think, I think he, he's gonna be underpaid for his education and I think that-
He's already done that before.
In a short, in a short period of time, though, in a short period of time, with this, this, being in a clerical union is a limited, has a limited upside.
I don't think so. I mean, we can ask people-
We're the ones that have gone backwards from agent to clerical. Well, I know we're still looking for an agent.
Yeah, I think we're, I think, I think we're looking for someone who can play both roles.
We're looking for a town planner, but you've got X amount of dollars to spend because what is, what we're getting is, is a union position with X amount of dollars.
Yeah.
And my point is, is that his education, a very short period of time, it may be a year, it may be two years. All right? He may say, "I, I, I, I need to do something else" because his qualifications will, will push him out to something else. Just because I think the money won't is not enough.
I don't know that, um, without a lot more experience, I don't, for money and the shit, entry-level architecture jobs are actually barely low-paying, right?
Yeah, but he's not, he's not entry-level, that's the problem.
Well, to get an, if he, if he wanted to work in architecture, he would be entry-level.
He would be, uh-
He would be entry-level.
But he's also mentioned he had a hard time finding those positions.
Um, I think, I think probably for the same reason we're discussing now, he's overqualified for so many jobs and yet he's underqualified and that he doesn't have that, like, he's in some ways overqualified for an entry-level architectural job, right?
Yeah, he's got like, what, three or a few years of architecture, but, you know.
Not, not even actual architecture, does he? Yeah, I guess-
But it's not like he has twenty-five, thirty years' experience.
No. Well, it's like, well, first off, he hasn't focused in on one thing.
Right.
All right? And that, and that, that kind of leads me to, I don't necessarily know if he'll be focused in on this particular job either.
Well, he's been a student for seventeen years.
Okay. What does that tell you?
It means that he wanted an academic track and you know what? He hasn't been successful at getting an academic track. Which I-
He would be the first person that that happens to.
I, I just went through this with a family member who, who had, was on a ten-year track position and was not happy with the academic situation and left to take a job that she's, was told to be grossly overqualified for, and she's ecstatic that they gave her the job. Ecstatic.
No, and, trust me, trust me, he'll be ecstatic, too, but, uh, I'm just wondering if, if, if this won't fill his, his, his need, uh, because, because of his expectations of what he was gonna do in the world.
Well, you know.
Okay? That's my concern.
So, let me just share this with you, because, um, like, in my career in banking, like, right now, there seems to be this, like, there's a, just a glut of people who are retiring. Um, you know, the technology has, like, just advanced so far that, you know, the people who were kind of holding on and, you know, like, to get out of the house and go be a teller for a couple, it just, it's gotten beyond them. And, um, so now, the, the employment pool that I'm, that I'm looking at for tellers is people right out of college because they can't find jobs. So I've got, you know, people who are far more qualified than me, you know, with business degrees and stuff like that, who are, you know, doing part-time tellering and stuff like that. So I think, I think it's, a lot of it is just the way the world is changing. You know, I think if we look at somebody like Rachel or even Deborah, I think that's, I think those are fine if you wanna keep the status quo, if we wanna, you know, keep moving and try to grow this.
I, I, I thought-
We need somebody like Matthew.
I thought that, that Rachel had the experience to help us grow, based on, on her legislative experience.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, uh, she is employed by the town, it's just she lives in town, which I think is a plus. My, my real concern is, like Paul just said, that I don't think Matthew's gonna stay.
Well, the other thing is, is that, and this board talked about it, too, is we need somebody who can get in here, can get moving quickly and can understand how this, how this place works. The advantage of having Rachel, she already knows all the players in, in the town hall.
Is it advantage?
Yes.
An advantage or disadvantage?
I would ask the same question. I think it is advantage.
I, I, I think Rachel's very qualified, don't get me wrong. I, 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 I do think that she's qualified, I'm not trying to say that she's not, I'm just saying that, that Matthew brings something that no one else can because he's overqualified. And, you know, so you see overqualified as a deficit and I see it as an asset.
You know, you look at, no, well, I, that, that's, that's true. I look at it as, I look at it as our expectations of, of asking for an awful lot from the individual that's taking this position, number one, to do things that, one, they're not compensated for. All right? I mean, realistically, because at one time, we were talking about having the clerk and a town planner and we're trying to roll both of those into one, all right, for short money-
Yeah.
Because it fits into the, it fits into a narrative.
Sounds like a good deal.
Sounds like a great deal.
But I'm saying this is that we may be, we may be going, looking for that, but you may not be getting that. We may get a person in here that, one, like I said, is overqualified and the other may be fine for a short period of time. But I think his, his need to do what he's doing, education-wise and everything else, is gonna drive him out of this position.
I think he's kind of dealt with education. Everyone's got it, it's education until they get into a job they really don't want to do.
Can I ask why, why you, the committee chose Deborah?
I think the feeling was, okay, I can speak for myself rather than for the committee. Deborah was a strong customer service person. I think sometimes it's easier to have someone who's not in the town and doesn't have local biases and ties that could influence the work of someone who should be fairly neutral except to carry out the purposes of the board. So I think Deborah was seeing.
She also had a very consistent employment record.
So she had a very strong employment record, a very consistent work record, and a lot of customer service experience and seemed to be able to handle environments in which she's getting challenged a lot.
Right.
And so we thought that she's, so they're very, what's interesting to me is that they, each three, each one of them bring strengths.
I agree.
You know, and it's not, and it's, makes the decision to me a little bit more difficult because it's not comparing apples to apples and saying, well, this person's a little bit stronger. You're comparing three kind of, an apple, an orange, and a banana. And do we want an apple, an orange, or a banana? You know?
I think we're down to pick between the apple and the banana.
I don't necessarily think we should have used the banana analogy, but.
That's all right.
Get your mind back to the table.
I'll be honest with you, I thought, out of, out of all of them that we talked to, I thought Deborah presented the best. I thought she was, she just made a great presentation with the screening committee. Like, you know, I sat there and kind of felt like she could do anything.
Oh. So.
Yes, well, I mean, it's kind of, I thought Rachel and Deborah were kind of neck and neck between the two of them. But I am hearing Rachel and Matthew were available immediately.
Yeah, but you don't, you don't want to leave a small gap in availability to start to keep you away from breaking in either. But.
Very close, well, I mean, this, this close, it's a factor.
What I want to ask Jim. Jim, what, what's your opinion of Matthew?
Uh, he'd be my choice. Uh, just because of all the, you know, what he brings to the table. We had a couple of candidates that did have some planning experience and knowledge of GIS and AutoCAD and MicroStation, like all the software Merrill Associates would use. And we picked Matthew and a couple of others. That's why we presented here.
I don't feel that.
He was the stronger of the two when it, on the planning side.
I don't feel he's overqualified.
I, hmm, not really. I mean, I have a master's, but I'm gonna go up to Somerville tonight and look into some manholes all night.
No, 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 I, I, no, no.
I am.
If that's what your master written, that's what your master.
No, no, I, I understand what you're saying.
And I think, I think, you know, you can't look at. Paul, you know a lot of electrical stuff, but you spend several hours a day just pumping stuff around and, you know.
You guys get compensated a lot more than what we're gonna compensate this position.
That's my point, but.
So.
That's a consideration.
I don't think this person, I don't think Matthew, if he's been a lecturer for a couple of years, I don't know what other jobs he's had to keep himself going because those probably didn't pay enough.
I understand that.
They probably paid.
Per deems.
Per deems. I, I'm thinking half of what we pay.
Do you think so?
Yeah. And they're not all year-long, right? They're just a personal master and all that? And I think we have enough, right now, we have enough, you know, we can push this up to the top of the, I, I feel comfortable that after our union stuff there, that it was, it was kind of indicated to me that we could push this position up to the third level, which would be the high end of the position.
All right. If, if, if we chose. If, if we chose a candidate like that, how soon would we be able to hire them?
Well, there's two who can start immediately. So.
I, I think we just have to take a vote on who we want. I, I, you know, I do think that Rachel, if I had to pick between Rachel and Deborah, for me, the fact that Deborah's out of town is nice, but I still think that Rachel probably has more directly relevant experience. I think Rachel could pick up the ball and run with it more quickly because she has, you know, knows some of the logistical stuff about preparing legal notices and posting meeting dates and keeping minutes. So some of that logistical stuff, I think Rachel could probably pick up more quickly than Deborah. And I think she, you know, I, I don't think she has the extensiveness of experience that Deborah has in the world and in customer relations. But I think that she has s- strong experience more recently, like in the last three years. So I'm not sure why she left the administrative assistant job to take a part, very part-time job. That's one thing I wish I had asked her.
Rachel?
Yeah.
Were you a family?
Right. She, I think she has two children.
Three.
Two children.
We have to be very careful about speaking about that being relevant.
No, 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 but I'm, no, but I'm just.
No, it isn't relevant.
That could be the part of the reason, that's all. And it doesn't matter.
Although the other job was just in Brockton, it wasn't far away. It's more like having a local job.
And we didn't ask if that was like a full-time position or if that was.
If that was also part-time.
Paul, she was on the advisory committee. She gave that up to be on the, to, to go to the part-time position of CPC. Because it was a, it would be a conflict.
So, well, one of the big strengths that Rachel brings to the table is the fact that she already understands how these boards can work.
Right.
So, you know, the posting of the agendas, the handling, the minutes, handling public hearings, making sure people are notified of public hearings, those things. That's the toughest part of this. That, that's the one thing I worry about with a candidate like Matthew is, those are really mundane tasks that have to be done on a regular basis.
So don't you get the impression that he would do a spreadsheet pretty quickly to schedule that out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the other thing we haven't talked about is there was another candidate that we did not invite back because we tried to keep it pretty narrow. But there was another candidate who also had some town hall experience and, but had less overall work experience. If anybody wanted to see the other resumes, we have them available.
No, I don't, I don't think that necessarily at this point.
She had come to a couple of our meetings.
Yeah, okay. I understand what you're saying. I think.
Yeah.
You know, I think I, I kind of, you know, and I, and I say this all the time too. When I, you know, when I hire a teller who's, you know, just come out of, you know, school and stuff like that, you know, I, you don't expect them to be with you very long. But, you know, they do bring a lot to the table and, and I think it's worth taking the shot.
With Matthew?
Definitely would be a, a different type of applicant to bring to a town hall environment.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll tell you something. One of the things was an email I got from Ed was, you know, when we kind of had been talking here was, you know, this like, almost like the three question marks. Are you guys actually thinking about a town planner? We haven't, in second word, second sentence was, we haven't had one in twenty-five years or something like that.
Right. It was sort of.
Like, we've always done it this way.
Right. And I think it, it does sort of push the boundaries to have someone with Matthew's experience to be able to say, what else could we and should we be looking at? What else, a town our size that's at this stage of growth, that's at this stage of, you know, we don't have twenty subdivisions a year right now because we don't have that kind of land. So the land we do use starts to become more scarce and how it's used becomes almost more important. Because you have, you.
You're kind of limited too as to what you're gonna be able to, to plan.
Well, you know, one of the.
First off is that, take the center for instance.
Yeah.
You have, the site, site plan comes in to this, what, just tell me what he's gonna do. What, what having a town planner was gonna do to change that?
Oh, I don't know if he'll change a specific site plan review so much as he, we, you know, when we're, I don't think that this board is only supposed to be doing site plan reviews, subdivision reviews.
But to answer your question though, Paul, is that there may have been some preliminary traffic analysis done on the center. So a couple of departments comes in with some relatively large project. You know, the board is prepared to ask for something very specific based on where the intersection is or what's abutting it, all of those questions.
Isn't that what we're doing with our town engineer?
Right, but we have to pay extra for all of that. If he has.
The applicant pays for that.
The applicant pays for it.
But if he has time and the interest is, he might be able to give us planning considerations.
When we do a new zoning bylaw, it's kind of always like, well, what do other towns do? Well, I think Matthew, if you go off research and come back and say, well, this is what's going on elsewhere.
Is it Rachel, or App can be able to get us grants to be able to do that kind of stuff?
She, I think that Matt, she'd be good at going and finding them, but I think Matthew would be able to write a much stronger grant application.
One of the other things is, you know, with Bryson Way, we just heard, you know, the, a couple of these abutters talking about how dense it is over there. You know, and is he the type of guy that can say, you know, does it make sense? Is this, are these, you know, when we get something like this, can you look at this? You know, does this bylaw even make sense in that area?
Well, first off, is that, right, out of him, is basically he would, he was checking sewer lines, things like that.
No, that was, that was Jim.
No, that was, that was.
No, that was, he had, no.
When they're conflicting with each other.
He had two different things. He had comprehensive site plans and then he said as a secondary thing, there were overlapping service issues.
But to me, I don't necessarily know, he, the, the part of what he was doing was necessarily any planning. I think it was looking at, at plans based on different, different things, just like we sent out to the engineer.
Well, but he's, he, he's written a chapter in a book on zoning in the controlled space of modernity.
Do we get it popular?
I'm sure we can if we want to buy this book Across Space and Time: Architecture and the Politics of Modernity.
What is it? Architecture?
Across Space and Time: Architecture.
So it's aerial.
Edited by Patrick Hawke.
What visuals of that are the basics?
Right.
And finding common ground between new urbanism and landscape urbanism. He's also done some shipping issues, which are not really particularly useful for us.
Right. I, I just think that he's, I don't, I, I just think he hasn't really found himself and hasn't concentrated on one particular area. And I tend to think, you know, I mean, we don't need to probably go much further because everyone has an opinion, I think, on, on each applicant. But I do think that, yes, you know, when you first look at it, you know, he exceeds the criteria. But almost to the point of, to me, is that this is the stepping stone to get, to, to get back into the workforce. And I think that's my point.
Is that bad?
No, but it is, it is for this board if it's gonna actually have to keep, uh.
Rehiring.
Rehiring in the future.
Well, there's a little bit of risk with that, yes.
There's a risk with anybody though.
There, there could be risk with all of it, right?
Mr. Chairman, can we take an initial vote?
Well, this one may be a risk we'd want to take. Because in the, in the short term, there could be a lot that we get out of this. And then in the long term, we may find that there's enough of that planning experience that could lead us down the path to a, a planner at some point in time. Not that we can make any promises on that.
Right. And is, how, I mean, doing up an agenda, is that, you know, you do it once and you get your template? And you're basically just plopping people on in a half hour.
Well, but that's, but that's just, that's just, that's just, you know, a tactical thing that people do.
Right, right.
I think what I was trying to get at with the applicants tonight was, who are you gonna work with? Who do you, who's got the priority? Who sets, who's the people that you report to? And I think they got it, that's the planning board. I think both Matthew and Rachel understood that. You know, and that's where we go with emotional intelligence as well. It's not so much knowing what to do, but how you do it and how you work with the public and how you interact with people that can make or break someone in a position. They could have all the skills in the world, they could be the smartest people in the world. But if they can't work with people, you can have a disaster in your hands.
I agree. And that's going to be defining a key to this position is how you handle it.
Unless, unless we're all sitting working with them day in and day out, we don't, you know, we're, you know, I think we're gonna take a leap of faith.
Well, I feel on that, on that issue, all three applicants did fine tonight. I didn't see any red flags come up on that.
No, they were, I think they're all three strong applicants. I think that at the end of the day, I would probably be choosing between Rachel and Matthew myself. Because I just thought that in tonight's presentation, I thought Rachel was a little stronger. And I think her experience, like if I were gonna go with that type of experience, I would say her experience would be a little more quickly usable. But I think I still sort of come out on the, on the side of Matthew offering us something different that's worth, that's worth exploring and trying to, trying to, to bring him in. And I think it's, it's not a typical person for this role, but I think that he could be very good at the role.
Although on the other hand.
I think, I, I think I prefer myself to go with the safe bet. The safe bet to me would be Rachel, number one. But because if you want to have somebody that has a planning background, I think that we need, then we need to take and go to get somebody who's gonna have planning background and have somebody who could, somebody with support of that particular person would be, in other words, if we would hire Rachel, then we look for the idea of going to the planning, planner stage.
But what do I have money for?
You don't have money for it. We've always never had money for it.
Well, and that's the problem. So we never get to that second stage.
I'm gonna tell you, you know, in working situ, if you get a planner there that they're paying eighty-five thousand dollars a year who's doing no planning, basically just overseeing meetings.
Exactly. And, and that's my point.
But I think he could give us that level.
You're, you're a.
And we'd be paying him for overseeing meetings.
No, but you're, you're, no, Paul, you're, you're assuming, well, we're assuming a lot. Because first off is that, yes, the mundane things may overwhelm him where the other things may not. I mean, him, he may be, he may be great in the, well, he's a speaker. So I mean, he may be great in the theoretical portion of it and not necessarily assuming an awful lot that he'd be great in the clerical portion of this. I'm looking where, where, where the primary job of this right now is clerical. All right? And we're into the, we're into, we're into, we're, we're, we're looking, well, we're looking into something else that.
Well, no, I want, I want somebody who can understand the rules and regs. I want someone who can, that if Brian's not here one night, someone who can help us go through the rules and regs and make a decision.
But that's not Matthew.
I think Matthew can get to that point.
Matthew could get to that point in a year or so.
Yeah, but I don't know that the other applicants are going to get to that point because they don't.
It's a small book of, the bylaws aren't, it's not like a Bible. It's just, they're not that overwhelming.
I think he understands what's supposed to be in bylaws. I think he understands what's supposed to be in rules and regs.
It's like a thick magazine.
I was going, I was going for the safe bet of all of the things that were required by statute to do, which I, I know that Rachel can handle. Where we, we, we think that, that this, that Matthew would be a great combination of planner and clerical. I'm not necessarily sure that's the truth. So I would be going for the safe bet for the board.
I think at this point, with Brian.
I mean, clerical, rather clerical is that filing cabinet over there.
Rather clerical is the, is the, is the minutes, making sure everything's stamped and making sure.
It's also partially that filing cabinet over there. And I think I added to the. I added to the regulations maybe 20 years ago, that each, each ASBILT that comes in, we got an AutoCAD file for it.
So, have you, considering you were the author of that, did you ever, did you ever...
Yeah, we got several in and no one was ever able to do anything with them.
Did you ever go back and look at that?
Yeah, we got it, we had a box of them somewhere, but no one, no one was ever able to do anything with them.
Well, that's the problem, we didn't have the capability.
They got wasted.
Well, we have them up, we have them up at, we have them up at the assessors office, and, and the D P W is working on, uh, the same system.
On what system?
The G I S.
Yeah, but let me ask a question, how valuable is that to the planning board? I mean, once the, once the, once the subdivision's done, ASBILTS are done...
I don't think it's that big of a deal.
Aren't they more important to the D P W than the planning board?
They're important everywhere. It all gets linked together.
I know, but the planning board's not going to have any jurisdiction over that, that subdivision after it's accepted by the town.
Once they're, once they're brought in, they go up...
You're losing that, my point is, you're losing that. Why do we keep that, that, well, that, that's not the, the D P W's...
Because that's when people come in, that's when people come in, they want to see it physical, like, I want to see that board!
No, no.
Twenty years from now, they're going to get on the town website, want to go to the G I S, and pull it up on their screen.
Are we in a position where we can start to discuss...
I think that Marilyn actually has to go research site plans and things for people who come in, realtors who come in and other people come in, I've heard her talk about it, and if we had that information maintained, we wouldn't constantly be pulling out files, it would be, here it is, we can electronically search and find it, and we don't lose a day of clerical work going to look for in the files.
Yeah.
That's, that's the long-term goal.
I passed Marilyn off the files, and she brought me into the back room over there where you're digging through boxes like this, and look that box, and it's like, oh my god. People expect you to be able to send this stuff out, you know, by email or zip file or whatever.
I mean, I think the world is changing, we're not changing with it.
Right, but I'm assuming, I'm assuming that, that Rachel could do that too. I mean, if it's just a zip file held into a file, um, that, she obviously could, could do that.
Well, combine them together and add them to our G I S system.
Can we take a, just a vote to see how we, how we stand?
You can, you can do whatever you like.
What, Mr. Chairman?
Would you, would you put your...
Are we ready for that?
Yeah, I think we're ready for that.
Okay.
So, um, I guess I don't really know how we do this.
I guess I would...
Let's just, let's just do a roll call, Dan.
Of, of, so rather than someone moving for an applicant to be hired, we just do a roll call on...
No, let's just do a roll call.
Well, everyone's going to pick, well, yeah.
Yeah, move, move for an applicant to be here.
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move that we hire Matthew Hines to fill the position of planning board assistant slash agent.
Second.
So, now you can do a roll call.
All right, so we'll do a roll call. Ms. Collet, while you make the motions.
Aye.
Mr. Erb.
No.
Jim?
Jim?
I second it, oh, that's true.
Andy?
Aye.
Okay.
No.
All right, I'm an aye.
You're an aye?
Yeah.
So, that solves the problem.
Um... I'm just taking notes for the record in case there's a problem with that.
For some reason, we were all waiting for you, I don't know, but like...
Yes, I'm just taking notes here, people.
Okay. Uh, if that's the case, are we done?
I guess we're done. So, we got a motion to adjourn.
Take the motion.
Is everybody here?
Okay.
Second.
All on paper?
Aye.
No.